This is a call to order. This is the February 13th, 2012, 6:30 PM. The Municipalities of Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission. May I have the roll call, please?
Connie Yoshimura.
Present.
Bruce Phelps.
Present.
Stacy Dean.
Here.
Terry Parks.
Here.
Dana Prue. Richard Wilson.
Here.
Ray Hickel.
Here.
Peter Mokehe.
Here.
Okay. We have a quorum. There are no minutes for this meeting, and so we will move on to C1, disclosures. Vice Chair Parks, would you do the disclosures, please?
Sure. Commissioner Phelps?
Nothing to disclose.
And I understand you did listen to the AMATS.
That's correct.
Mr. Deanes?
No.
Mr.?
No conflict.
Thank you. And Commissioner Mokehe?
Again, I think I need to remind him that although I was not yet a member of the Commission, I was in attendance at two of the meetings that covered this material.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Nothing.
And I have nothing. And I'm going to read a statement for Ms. Yoshimura. It was announced in the January 30th, 2012, meeting of the Commissioners. Previously reclusive Commissioner Yoshimura from participating in this case number 201-126, the AMATS 2035 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Note for the record that at this meeting Commissioner Yoshimura disclosed that she is related to the case. She's a resident land developer with substantial holdings of raw land in Anchorage, Eagle River, and Palmer, Alaska, and that some of these requested improvements would have a negative or a positive impact on property she owns. Based on disclosure, the Commission reclused Commissioner Yoshimura from participating in the case, and she will not be participating in this evening's case. So.
Thank you, Vice.
Can I add something on disclosure?
Yes.
I just realized this, that I am a, well, I work for the State of Alaska Department of Natural Resources, and so we do deal with transportation issues throughout the state. We're not specifically involved in any of the projects inside the Anchorage area right now, but I did want to disclose that I do have that relationship.
Did Willis have any impact on any decisions you make tonight?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Parks. There are no items on the consent agenda, and so at this particular point in time, I am going to turn the chair over to Vice Chair Parks to deal with item E.
Thank you. This chair is the only one that has the power to make the right motions. That's the reason I had to move, so I apologize. I've got to find myself first. Under the unfinished business, case number 201136, the 2005 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. A brief note, this case had a public hearing in our January 9th meeting and was closed with a deboration to the Commission, and postponed until January 30th. And then on January 30th and February 6th, not enough members were present to have a decision to participate. The meeting was then postponed until tonight, February 13th. We also had an inquiry from the ombudsman on if there were going to be any other opportunities for people to testify on this matter, and there are several. There are four meetings, a March 9th meeting, an assembly public hearing for the, and then March 27th, the Assembly has a public hearing for this matter. April 12th, the AMATS Technical Advisory Committee, and April 26th, AMATS Policy Committee will have an opportunity to do that. We would ask that, I would ask for a motion from the floor to confirm that it will be no more public hearing at the P&amp;Z. And we have a move from Commissioner Dean. Now, do I have a second? We have a second from Ray Hickel. You know, I guess the point of, just. Oh, okay. I'm going to state your motion, Stacy. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, in response to the ombudsman's inquiry, I move to confirm there will be no further opportunity for the public to testify on the 2035 MTP prior to the Commission taking an action.
Do I have any, we have a second with Commissioner Hickel. Do I have any opposition to that motion? Oh, discussion, I'm sorry.
I guess I'll have a discussion on that. I haven't been privy to all the discussion on this particular item, but what is the issue here? Is it alleged that some people have not had the opportunity for public comment? Is that the issue?
No, I think what it was is that they wanted to present information after the public hearing was closed, and that was the issue. And so they'll have the opportunity to present that somewhere else. There wasn't somebody who was left out. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes. I was, last meeting, we discussed this a little bit about whether to open or not, and I was under the impression that there was one or two opportunities after the public, this body's actions. But seeing that there are four, I think there's adequate opportunity for the public to be heard and considered after this Commission forwards its recommendations, so I would support the motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Shall we vote? Or? What's that? Any objections from anyone? Okay, then we'll move on. Thank you.
Would you like some findings on that?
Yes.
Okay. There were no irregularities in the way this public hearing was held. It was noticed properly. The public hearing was opened, testimony heard, and the public hearing closed in adherence to code. Thank you.
Thank you. And we would also ask that the staff provides the ombudsmen with our decision here so that they'll know that we acted on it. And the next thing we have to do now is we need to, when we left this meeting on, at our last time that we addressed this, there was a motion on the floor, it was actually mine, to move to accept the 2005 Metropolitan Transportation Plan and forward to the Assembly for approval with technical corrections and edits laid on the table. That was seconded by Commissioner Deanes. I guess I'd open it up for discussion again.
A moment, please. I just wanted to advise you that at the last meeting, someone from the public had handed out to each of you across the table a statement from the Federation of Community Councils, and I was not aware of that. That was received after the public hearing was closed, and you cannot consider that in your deliberations either. And I just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible to ask questions of staff?
Sure.
Okay. I was looking at the revenue projections, and I forget the exact amount, but I was impressed by the size of the amount of revenue that they required. I was also looking at the various projects, and what I was impressed with is the amount of money that was associated with the infrastructure for the bridge and the bridge itself, as I recall, and I could be wrong on this. It was 1.2 to 1.3 billion. I guess I'm a little bit at a loss as to know why you would feel as confident as you do as to these revenue projections. It seems like a very, very large amount of money.
Through the chair, Commissioner Phelps. The, yes, it is a large project. It is probably the second biggest project if you consider the Seward Highway to Glen Highway project, one project, although there's phases of it. And it does require quite a bit of revenues, as you stated. Primarily, the financial plan requires or accounts on the collection of tolls to pay back the bond and private equity investment into the project. And I don't believe the representative from Gobada is here, so I'll try to explain as best I can.
He's done.
What the scheme is.
Okay.
So, the revenue projections, according to their latest financial plan, which is incorporated into the MTP, shows that there's a shortfall in revenues sufficient to pay back the bonds in the short term. And as the amount of traffic ramps up, the amount of tolls collected isn't sufficient. So what they're asking and what they presented to the state legislature is a bill, two bills. One requiring that, or asking the state to provide a $150 million reserve fund to pay back the shortfall, to make up the shortfall, which would be paid back in the future as the revenue surplus becomes available to pay it back. The second part, the second bill that they submitted to legislature, asks for, or requires the state to accept responsibility for the paying back of the bonds. So if those two bills are approved, and at this point, we don't know what the status of those are and whether or not they will be approved or not, then there will be sufficient funds to back the building of any kind of bridge, no matter what the cost, because essentially the state is backing it, so there's no potential shortfall. Now, what we've struggled with as AMATS, and this might be a longer explanation than you want, let me know, is whether or not the additional funds that might be forthcoming from the state will affect the revenues that will come into the AMATS area for the other projects that are listed in the plan. This is an issue that we aren't able to really nail down 100 percent. We've talked to the legislature, some of the committees, the House Infrastructure Finance Committee, for instance, and also the Anchorage Caucus, and asked them these questions. Their answer, I think, is probably illustrative in that they tell us that there's so many other variables in the funding equation for the state that it's really impossible to tell what effect one project will have on another project. If they do have to spend more money on the Kinnick Arm Bridge, they don't know, they can't tell you whether that will have an effect on it. Our assumption in this plan, in order to make it financially constrained, is that it won't have an effect on the availability of state funding for the other projects in the plan.
So, I mean, that's an assumption. I mean, given all the possibilities and all the different conditions out there in the future, and I guess given some history that I had too, it's very difficult to speculate on the amount of funding that's available. It's also very difficult to speculate on how that money is going to be allocated throughout the state and even within the metropolitan area into the various forms of transportation and types of road projects. How then can the plan come to conclusion that it's financially constrained, that is, in a way, not financially constrained, but financially viable, given those conditions and given the uncertainty involved?
Through the chair. The plan relies on the forecast that the Kinnick Arm Gobada has provided us. The forecast for trips over the bridge and the ensuing amount of revenues is sufficient, according to their calculations, to finance the bridge with that additional 150 million. The big question mark is if that's not true, then there'll be a bigger liability and exposure to the state. But at this point, the AMATS cannot, we're not in a position to rerun their modeling projections, their toll revenue projections, and contradict their current assessment of the financial plan. It will become clear in the future, probably fairly soon, within six months, if, when and when the proposals from the concessionaires come in, then the financial plan would be much more crystallized in as far as they'll provide estimates for the cost of the bridge. They'll also have a more complete picture of what kind of equity they're going to bring forward, what kind of other financing sources they might have available. There's so many possibilities with respect to the financing of this bridge that the current snapshot we have is inevitably going to be changing.
So, given the fact that, again, everything is quite uncertain and seems to be somewhat of a moving target, and actually a very large moving target, how then do you anticipate dealing with the decision that's made potentially to not fund this particular project? Let's say, for example, they do have discussions in the legislature, and either A, they take no action, or B, they take the action, they're not going to support it. How then does AMATS, and specifically in this transportation plan, handle that particular contingency?
Through the chair, Commissioner Phelps. The, currently as it stands now, we reviewed the financial plan aspect of the MTP with the Federal Highways Administration, and they're satisfied with the assumptions we're carrying through currently. The federal regulations, however, state that if there is a change in the finance, financial plan of the, that was adopted after the plan was adopted, then we're under no obligation to immediately turn around and change that plan. But we are, of course, obligated to do that the next time the plan is updated. In this case, probably four years or so. The AMATS Policy Committee could elect to amend the plan and make the change immediately if that's the case, but they aren't required to do that.
Well, I guess where I'm going with this is that, you know, there is the situation where if the bridge is funded, there is only so much money available, and it is very possible that money is going to be diverted to the bridge and taken away from the other transportation planning projects. They're in your plan now, I understand that, but the reality in terms of not having sufficient money is that you have to make a decision between a variety of projects. So how does a plan deal with that situation?
Through the chair, Commissioner Phelps. I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
Well, here's where I'm going with it. I mean, I'm assuming, and no, as I said, assume, that the legislature will either not take action or will not approve certain of the aspects of the funding such that there's questions about the sufficiency of funding in the future for this particular project. And there's a certain amount of inertia in planning, okay? And it may take years for it to be kind of all kind of figured out. But in the interim, how then do you deal with the prioritization of projects? Do you do that through the TIP? Is that how you handle it?
Through the chair, Commissioner Phelps. In this particular plan, for the first time, in doing my experience and working 15 years in this area, we developed a criteria, initial screening criteria of all the projects in order to sort out the ones that would end up in the final plan. We could utilize that initial screening criteria to further review the projects and reprioritize them in the plan. But you're right, though. Ultimately, the funding for all projects has to be carried through the LRTP or the MTP into the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program. And the Transportation Improvement Program, there's no wiggle room in that particular document for guessing what the funding is. That funding is specified specifically through DOT as to how much is going to be available over the four-year term of the TIP. So in that respect, it's much tighter type of fiscal constraint than what we deal with in the requirements than what we deal with in an MTP.
Is there any discussion in the plan about how to handle that contingency?
Through the chair, Commissioner Phelps. There is only some discussion, I believe, with respect to what happens if additional state funding is required in the future. And I think there's some discussion regarding reassessment of the financial plan, if that's the case.
Is it possible to amend the plan to include additional guidance language?
Through the chair, Commissioner Phelps. Yes, I guess, I'm sure there's room to provide guidance. In fact, I think in the previous plan, what we asked for was that, we stated that if, previously, in the last iteration of the plan, it was assumed that tolls would pay for the entire project. There wouldn't be any additional state or federal money being there. And the plan specified that if there is any additional request for state money, then we would review the plan and amend it accordingly and adjust the financial constraint analysis accordingly.
Well, I guess the question of staff, then, if I were to make a recommendation as a modification to the motion to include language that dealt with financial contingency, and would that be acceptable to staff, or do you have to actually see the actual language? I'm not sure I can develop the language right now.
I, through the chair, Commissioner Phelps. If it was included in a resolution as a finding, then that would be forwarded to the AMATS TAC, a Technical Advisory Committee, and they would be requested to deal with it. And they could come up with language if they choose, if they agreed with your recommendation.
So what I'm hearing is that there's a possibility it'd be dealt with based upon the discussions of the TAC?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson, you were in the queue.
Okay.
Commissioner, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was in the queue. I felt that I should remind everyone, back on January 9th, whenever I first heard this, I was the one who was scratching my head and trying to figure out how to navigate through this and made the motion to postpone at that time. Since that time, and the main reason was that predominantly this document was provided a short time for us to review, and we learned at the meeting that the page references in this document for the changes didn't match the draft, so you had to really work hard, and I just didn't have sufficient time to do that. We were, since that meeting, provided a second document that had improved references. Still not real easy to do, but much better references. I was able to do my cross checks, was able to ensure that the items that I felt were important, or that the people that I've talked with from specifically Chugiaq Eagle River, that their thoughts had all been accommodated in the document. So I have no further questions on the document.
Thank you. Any other comments? I guess we'll, is there, we're ready to call for the question, I guess, or? Okay. Fine, well, okay. Yeah, findings. Do we have anybody that has any findings on this? I'm sorry? Do you have a motion on the floor yet? Okay.
At the January meeting, hold on just a second here. Will I grab my note?
I got it right here.
Thank you. There was a motion on the table prior to postponement, and the motion was to move to accept the 2035 Metropolitan Transportation Plan and forward it to the Assembly for approval with the technical corrections edits laid on the table. And that was the motion on the table when the postponement occurred. So we're picking up that motion and moving forward.
Okay. So if I want to make an amendment to that, I have to propose an amendment, is that correct? Okay. Okay. So I would like to do that now. I would like to amend the main motion to include an evaluation of financial contingency in the long-range plan, specifically as it relates to the funding of the Kinnick Bridge as associated infrastructure, and more specifically to deal with the situation that if is determined that funding is not provided to the extent identified in the transportation plan, that there'd be a re-evaluation of projects and a re-ranking of projects as a result of that evaluation.
And we have a second from Ms. Deanes. Any comments, discussion? Okay. Want to call for the vote, I guess?
I think I want to put some discussion in here, however.
Yeah, I'd like to request, I'm not really clear what that does for the document, how that, I'm not seeing a value added.
Well, it gets to the issue of what happens in a situation where the expected funding that's identifying the plan is not forthcoming. I think that's a real possibility. And we've heard discussion about, yeah, we've heard discussion about this in the newspaper, that the administration may not support this particular proposal at the level that's requested. And if that's the case, you're going to have a situation where there will be an imbalance between expenses and projected revenues, and you have to deal with that in some fashion.
Mr. Chair, I guess my question would be, how does that differ from any other project in the plan?
It's 1.2 to 1.3 billion dollars. It's such a large project, it affects the balance of the planned document.
Perhaps this may clarify the discussion just a little bit. If we were to do nothing and inadequate financing, inadequate funding to support the financing were the case, then you would automatically have a situation where it went back to the authority or whoever the authorities are, and they would have to re-wicker the project analysis to reflect the changed financing. That doesn't require the Planning and Zoning Commission to change, I don't think. I see what your concern is, Commissioner Phelps, and if this doesn't work, then what do we do, is your true question. And what I think we do is we will, we may be asked to re-evaluate. If it's such a large part of the AMATS plan, then it may come back to, maybe this is a question to staff, would the re-wickered AMATS plan come back to this Commission for further action? Let me just direct that question to staff.
Thank you. Through the chair, there's a couple of issues here, I think, I failed to clarify. One is that the Kinnick Arm Crossing financing is considered to be completely separate from the rest of the projects. If the project is dropped, or there's not funding from the state forthcoming this legislative session, that's not going to have any effect on our financial plan for the rest of the projects. Second, if the legislature doesn't come forth with the money, 150 million, or the other bill is not passed regarding the backing of the bonds by the state, then it's conceivable that the project won't go forward anyway, unless there's some other financing mechanism that one of the concessionaires comes up with. So I don't know if it's, if this project changes, if the financing for the Kinnick Arm Crossing is not forthcoming from the legislature, I don't believe that it will require a re-ranking of the projects that are currently in the plan.
Okay. In that case, that suggests that we really don't have a role, in my view, in dictating how the workaround occurs after a failure in financing, if that were to occur.
Any other comments? Let's call for the question on the motion to amend. And the motion fails. So we're back to the original motion and findings. Right. Findings first, I guess, and then we'll vote on the motion. Right, findings first, I guess, and then we'll vote on the motion. Stacy, our-- Commissioner Dean?
Mr. Chair, my findings are, we feel this plan was well thought out at length. It includes all areas of Anchorage and Eagle River, and it meets the National Transportation Plan requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? We'll call for a vote. And that motion passes. And we'll take a short recess while we change. Chairs.
To the proposed amendments that have been brought forward at the request of the administration, I would entertain a motion regarding changing the hearing schedule and expanding the scope of cases 2011-104.
To the chair.
Yes.
I would make a motion that we, in case 2011-104, the proposed amendments provisionally adopted Title 21 be rescheduled for public hearing to Monday, March 12th, 2012. The commission also requests that the municipality re-notices this case to open all the provisionally adopted Title 21 for public comments and recommended changes at P&amp;Z. In addition to the proposed amendments that have been brought forward at the request of the administration, the March public hearing would also cover provisionally adopted Chapters 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 12, and 13 as well, as draft number, chapter number 14.
Thank you, Commissioner Parks. Is there a second? Mr. Hickel has seconded the motion. Is there any objection to the motion? Any, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion passes. For the public's information, I would like to announce that the schedule of the Title 21 work sessions to familiarize the Planning and Zoning Commission with provisionally adopted Title 21, tonight, February 13th, after adjournment of the regular Planning and Zoning Commission and located in LUSAC Public Conference Room in public lobby of LUSAC Library. February 27th at 6:30 PM, located in Meeting Room 170 of the Planning and Development Center Building at 47 Elmore Road. March 12th, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM, located in the LUSAC Public Conference Room in public lobby of the LUSAC Library. Any additional work sessions will be noticed once confirmed. The schedule for the public hearings are, is March 12th at 6:30 PM, the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. March 19th at 6:30 PM, a special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the continuation of the public hearing. The public comment deadline is now extended to March 2nd, and official public notice of the changes to case 2011-104 will be provided, will be provided by the department. Is there any other questions regarding this schedule? All right. That is our only issue, only case on the schedule for this evening. And so, are there any other announcements that need to be made? Any comments from commissioners? Then I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Ms. Dean, seconded by Richard Wilson. Any objection? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. We will take a 10-minute recess, or a 10-minute break, and we will reconvene for a work session on Title 21 in the Public Conference Room on the first floor. And certainly, all of you that were interested in giving public testimony are certainly welcome to attend that work session. Thank you.